Rory, 6:00, 7:00 PM is now called to order. Councilmember Goodspeed will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Chip. City Clerk, would you please take a roll?
Councilmember Cooper?
Here.
Councilmember Beaton?
Here.
Mayor Protim Zalinski?
Here.
Councilmember Goodspeed?
Here.
Mayor Smith?
Here.
Councilmember Grabowski?
Here.
Councilmember Pontiac?
Here.
City Manager?
Here.
City Attorney?
Here.
DPW Director?
Here.
Finance Director?
Here.
Planning and zoning Director?
Here.
Public Safety Director?
Here.
City Engineer?
Here.
Thank you. Before we get to public hearings, I would like to ask for a motion to add to our new business, Item E, council support for Manistee Blacker Airport for essential air service continuation.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
I have a motion by Mayor Protim Zalinski and a second by Councilmember Cooper. Is any discussion? City Clerk, would you please take a roll?
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Zalinski?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodspeed?
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Pontiac?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Public hearings, we have none. Citizen comments on agenda-related items. This is an opportunity for citizens that are present to comment on items that are on the agenda. If you wish to comment, please come forward to the podium, state your name and address, and limit your comment to five minutes, please. Are there any citizens that wish to make comment on tonight's agenda items? If not, we'll move on to the consent agenda. All items marked with an asterisk are on a consent agenda and considered by the city manager to be routine matters. Prior to approval of the consent agenda, any member of council may have an item from the consent agenda removed and taken up during a regular portion of the meeting. Consent agenda items include approval of minutes, cash balances, quarterly financial update, quarterly investment update, notification regarding the next work session, and consideration of authorizing the annual St. Patrick's Day parade.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Beaton and a second by Mayor Protim Zalinski. Any discussion? Would you please take a roll?
Councilmember Pontiac?
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodspeed?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Zalinski?
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton?
Yes.
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Thank you. Unfinished business, we have none. New business. Item A, consideration of budget amendment 2018-1 for fiscal year ending June 30, 2018. City of Manistee is required by state law to ensure that actual expenditures do not exceed budgeted amounts. Over the course of the current fiscal year, unanticipated and unbudgeted events and/or council-approved expenditures have occurred. The budget, the proposed budget amendments addressed expenditures associated with these events to ensure compliance with state statutes regarding appropriations. At this time, council could take action to adopt Budget Amendment 2018-1 for fiscal year ending June 30, 2018.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Mayor Protim Zalinski, second by Councilmember Goodspeed. Is any discussion?
I'd like to have some explanation on what we're, where the money's coming from, I guess. Is it coming within the line items of the budget of the departments, or is it coming out of contingency, or?
So, the answer's different for each of these. I'll go through them one by one. The increase in the line item in the Police Department, that's going to be coming out of fund balance. There's not room within the budget to absorb that expenditure for the fitness-for-duty evaluation. The travel and training is going to be, increase in the Fire Department is offset by escrowed cash that finally had a use, and that escrowed cash was from things like sales of T-shirts and donations that were earmarked for the Fire Department. The major street fund increase was budgeted in last fiscal year. The project didn't happen until this fiscal year, so those funds were just sitting there waiting to be utilized. The boat launch fund will be coming out of fund balance for the emergency repair to the wall. And on the water and sewer fund, the refund to Sprint for the overpayment just comes out of the fund balance.
Do we not have a surplus in the budget this year?
Yeah, we did have a small surplus, correct?
Will we use that first?
Well, at the end of the day, it'll, it'll tend to lessen whatever surplus is there or increase whatever deficit, correct? Thank you.
Any other questions, discussion? City Clerk, would you please take a roll?
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Zalinski?
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Pontiac?
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodspeed?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Thank you. Item B, consideration of authorizing Harbor Commission sponsorship solicitation to fund paving of the Marina patio area. The City of Manistee Harbor Commission has identified the Marina patio as an area in need of improvement. The Commission has agreed that concrete would be the best overall surface for the patio. Cost associated with the project will range between $9,000 and $11,000. The Commission has formalized an initiative to solicit sponsorships to partner with a company to fund the project. At this time, council could take action to authorize the Manistee Harbor Commission to solicit sponsorships to fund the paving of the Marina patio area.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Mayor Protim Zalinski and a second by Councilmember Pontiac. Is there any discussion?
Yes, if you would, Mayor. I believe that this patio will enhance the use of our Marina. Once word gets out that we have this done, it will increase our revenue. I would like to entertain the thought that maybe we could come up with the funds in our budget some way to just do this, rather than have people off soliciting funds. I don't know if I'd get council to go along with that or not, but we're not talking about a lot of money. It seemed like projects that we want were able to find the money, and I would like to think we could find that within the budget, and I would defer to Mr. Bradford to think if we could.
The Marina fund certainly can't support that level of expenditure, and we're already sending over $65,000 a year from the Capital Improvement Fund to help service the debt. If council was in agreement that they wanted to try to fund that, I would suggest it come out of our general fund, fund balance, which had a sizable surplus at the end of fiscal year 2017.
So, we would have money in the fund balance if we decided to do this?
From the general fund. If you wanted to transfer some more money to the Marina, then you could fund it that way.
Okay.
I'm not sure I see a downside to allowing contributions from various organizations or companies for the patio. Am I missing something? Should we discuss that angle, or? I don't understand why you would want to do that out of our taxpayer money if we can actually get contributions for it. I'm confused. Help me.
Mr. Saylor, could you help? What's your opinion on, on the sponsorship and contributions?
He or?
City Attorney.
City Attorney. Well, you certainly are well within your authority to solicit that, and I don't know if it's going to be a sponsor and they get to put a sign up on the patio or whatever it might be, but you certainly can do that.
Okay.
I, I would like to see if it, at first, to see if we can get sponsors, and then if we fall short. But I'm in agreement with Councilwoman Beaton. I don't see why we can't solicit first and then go from there. And we do put a lot of money in the Marina right now.
Mr. Bradford, these budget amendments we just did, how much in total will we be taking out of the fund balance to handle those?
At the end of the day, I don't believe we'll be reducing our fund balance at all. I think we'll have a surplus this fiscal year, so it'll just reduce the size of the surplus.
Do you have an idea approximately what that size may be?
I would say it's going to be north of $50,000. It could be as high as 100. That's where I'm thinking it's going to come in right now. That's primarily from the excess payments we got from the state for personal property tax reimbursement.
I don't see the difference between making a contribution to the Ramsdale or making a contribution to the harbor, I guess. So, I, I think having people that want to come forward and make a contribution to improve something in the city is a good thing. I don't really want to distinguish that motivation if it's out there.
I think, I think the patio area has been, been an area of concern with the Harbor Commission and at the Marina. It doesn't drain properly. There's accumulations, mold issues and such. So, it's an area that has not been addressed for a while that truly needs to be addressed. And I think Harbor Commission has, has explored some avenues. We've probably got even greater expenses coming long-term because of the age of some of the docks and the raising and lowering of the, of the water level. Right now, we're taking money, is that out of the Capital Improvement Fund, Mr. Bradford, that we supplement the Marina right now for the debt service?
Correct.
Okay. And it's about $55,000 right now?
Even more reason to, in my mind, and even more reason to welcome having this initiative.
I'd like to hear from one of the members of the Harbor Commission that's here that's on that fundraiser end of it, talk about it, maybe see what they think their chance of success is.
Hi, my name's Ty Cook. I'm now the chairman of the Harbor Commission. Been on the Commission for five or six years, I guess. I got on it when the new building was about halfway completed and was involved in the effort to complete it and, and to get it up to a level that we, as a Commission, were happy with. The issue of the patio area has been an open issue since the very beginning. It was not addressed during the design or the construction of the Marina building. It was left pretty much as a thing to be looked at in the future, and so here we are. There have been a couple of things done. The city has put some gutters on the west side of the building and a conductor down to a drywell in the patio area in an attempt to dry it up somewhat, and that has been successful. We also, Parks Commission has stopped the irrigation system from adding more water into that area, so that's also helpful. So, regarding what you all may decide, our biggest issue, one of them, remains something that you all are going to have to decide, I believe, because it involves who's going to be able to use this area. If it's going to be, depending on how the money is raised and how the work is completed, at the point that it's complete, who is going to be able to utilize that area for their benefit? The boaters only, or anybody that walks down the riverwalk and walk in there with their lunch buckets and coolers and take advantage of that area until they don't want to be there any longer and they can walk on down the riverwalk? Citizens of the city or not citizens of the city, doesn't really matter. And then that brings the question, who's going to maintain it? If it's part of, basically at that point, if it's accessible to anybody, then the maintenance of that would be just like the rest of the Parks areas. My concern in that we, Marina staff would then not be responsible for the maintenance of that area. That's another thing that someone else would have to decide. I don't think the Harbor Commission has standing to make those decisions by the use or the maintenance. I think it's essential that we do address the completion of that area. It would be a benefit, regardless of how you decide it should be used, to those who will use it, whether it's only the boaters, or it's visitors, or it's residents, or whoever it might be. And it will add to the desirability of boaters to visit the Marina, and hopefully, one of the things I'm going to continue to pursue is to try to get more seasonal slips rentable in however we do that with State of Michigan. Having that patio area completed would make the marketing of those seasonal slips easier. Regarding the issue of solicitation of donations, I don't think we can do that until we've been told by the council who's going to be using it, because we have to be able to explain to the people we're asking to donate who will be making use of the facility. So, that has to be done, and one of the other things I'm thinking as listening to you all talk about whether or not the city can afford to do this, perhaps if there were a matching fund thing where everybody could be satisfied by our Harbor Commission's efforts to obtain donors, if the city can then match those funds that we raised, that would reduce the pressure on the city to come up with the money and reduce somewhat the pressure on us to find donors. So, that's all I have to say. My wife has a thing over here, she didn't hold up, that says, "Shut up."
I have a question. Who's maintaining the patio now? Is it the Parks Commission?
Well, basically, it requires no maintenance now.
Okay, but who, it obviously falls on a chart somewhere for somebody's responsibility?
Well, if there's something, if there's things done now, it would be Parks, if they take their weed whacker in there, and, because right now, up until this point, it's basically just left to...
And then who has been using it in the past? Open to the public?
There has been a table there with eight or 10 chairs that's in that area that's used occasionally, but there's no lighting, there's no bug, you know, basically, it's one level above a swamp, kind of, because it's been so wet. People can't get in there with the mowers to mow the grass, and this summer, it's better dried up, so I don't know if that's increased the usage or not.
Well, what, there should have been an assumption made, who uses it at some point, right? That's, does anybody know the answer to that question?
Not definitively. It's there as part of the Marina, but there's nothing that prohibits anyone from sitting in that patio. My, my assumption would be that if people were walking by there, they would just automatically think that that's a area reserved for boaters, but we have no signs indicating that.
If I remember correctly, when the Marina was built, there was, there was plans to put the patio out there. In fact, they were, the plans were in the future, but the, the windows facing that patio or even designed that could be removed and a sliding door could be put in there. There's always been plans, and for the very reason that Mr. Cook brought up, I just, I would just like to see the city come up with the funds to do it and get it done with, and you're not getting into all this, who can use it, who can't use it. It's done, it's there, it's available, and it will enhance the Marina and the boaters that use it.
May I ask you a question? If, if the city does pay for it, then who uses it? Is it just going to be open then, or is it going to be assigned for boaters only? Or what is, what is the assumption going to be?
The talk, the talk in the Harbor Commission meeting was trying to figure out a way to make it for boaters only, but I don't, personally, I don't think how, I don't know how you can do that. You, you could put a wire fence up and a gate and a padlock, but I, I don't know how you could do that. It's just going to be open for everybody. Anybody that wanted to use it, it would be there. It would be taxpayer dollars, it's, it's open to them, just like the boardwalk is open to them. But it would be done. It wouldn't be a swamp. It would enhance the value of the, or the appearance of the Marina. It would definitely be attractive to boaters who stay there on nightly basis. It'd be a nice, a nice area.
I don't necessarily agree with having more taxpayer dollars be part of adding to the Marina, which is not open to all of the taxpayers.
No, it needs to be open to everybody. And I think Mr. McCullough has some, you did some work on that, and what we're talking about is cement?
Spicer Group put together several options, and I believe, I presented them, I presented them on, on behalf of the engineer at, at one of the Harbor Commission meetings, and I believe the consensus was to put concrete in there.
And I believe one of the, one of the reasons that the price is rather inexpensive compared to some of the other projects?
Correct.
That the city employees were going to do some of this work?
It's, it's possible to have my staff actually do the work.
Would that reduce any of this, this amount here?
It could, and I, I don't remember if you, if they fully worked out the transition on how the patio level was going to attach down to the sidewalk along the Marina itself. I would think that, that would probably be the most expensive part, but if, if my staff were to do that work, you would cut the labor costs out of that number.
So, if the city was to pay for it, from my perspective, it would enhance the Marina, the boating people that boat there, it would be for them, but it'd also be for the, for everybody. People walking up and down, visitors, everybody would have an opportunity to use that. That would be my vision.
Yeah, that would make sense.
Thank you.
There are, there are certain aspects of the Marina. The refrigerators, ice maker, washers and dryers for the boaters that are paying fees to dock at the Marina that are typically limited to, to those people that are paying the fees and staying at the Marina. It is a public facility, but that, that doesn't make it a laundromat or, or, you know, a cooler storage area for other people that aren't, aren't actually docked there. Access to it, I think, as we've discussed in, in Harbor Commission meetings, is pretty much open to the public. A lot of people will come by, and you don't have to fence it or put any signs up or anything, and will pretty much recognize that, that boaters are using a, a particular area and such, but, and it is an area that has, has been identified as, as a necessity. You get, you get the moss, you get mold from collection of water. The drainage was not set properly to begin with. It's something that needs to be addressed. Harbor Commission thought the, the best solution to that would, would perhaps to, to be to solicit sponsorships and donations, and that's the avenue that, that they've proposed to, to city council. The, how does everybody feel? I mean, the motion is to authorize the Harbor Commission to solicit. Who can amend the motion? Does someone want to amend the motion?
I'd like to amend it, that we, that we just move forward with it and take the money out of, I forget what fund Mr. Bradford said, general fund, and just, and just do it. I think you're going to have a hard time raising money, asking people for money for our patio at the Marina and not make it accessible to everybody. I don't think they're going to want to discriminate, and I just...
Did you want to amend?
It's just my feeling.
You want to amend the motion?
Yes, I'll amend the motion. Do we need to vote on this motion, Mr. Saylor?
Didn't we already make a motion?
Already made a motion, second.
If you have a motion to amend the current motion and their support, then you'd vote on that amendment and then vote on the...
Original.
There's no reason to move forward if, if council feels that they would rather have the money raised, there's no need to go forward. Is there, can we legally take a consensus before we vote on this, or do we get opinions? Yes or no, or?
You're discussing, you can continue your discussion on the motion that's pending before you.
Well, I think we need to, we need to vote to see if everybody agrees that you want to amend it, right?
We have to vote, you have to vote either yes or no on this, and then make a, make a motion to have the city fund it.
I, I'm more in support of allowing for solicitation of funds to do it. I think it's a, it's in the right spirit of things, and I'm also in favor of letting the few people, the public, that want to, to utilize the area, allow them to use it. And as, as long as the sponsors understand that, that there likely will be general public that may be using it, I, I don't really see the downside. I feel like we're splitting hairs on this, actually.
Well, my frustration with it is that this is, this is something that's been going on for, I don't know how many years. It's way back, they've talked about this patio, and I'm to the point where it, it just goes full circle. I just want to get it done and enhance that area, make it available to our citizens to use. They can sit there and feed the ducks or whatever, and, and we're not talking a ton of money. I mean, if, if it's a project that we, that we want, we find the money for it. This is a project we can all use and all share, so that's just my opinion.
Can we try to do the, the sponsorship and then come back to it in like six months to see how it's going and then re-discuss it?
Six months gives us into August.
Yeah, then we'll be through 2018.
Two months, maybe, you know, but I'm not trying to, you know, I mean...
I would go along with that.
I don't think they could get in two months. I mean, they would, it would have to be more into the next budget then, but I just really think that we should see how it goes first.
Okay.
Go from there.
Yeah, I really think...
But I don't see it as a bad thing to even try.
I'm sorry.
Sorry. There's a lot more stuff that I think is more beneficial that we need to look at before we just look at the Marina. I mean, we have other things that we have to deal with that are bigger, and if they have a solution to it, to solving it, then let's, let them do it instead of changing it.
Well, and I also worry about the fact that the Marina, it's, it's really, it's pretty well-known that we're, it's not a moneymaker. We're sort of in debt on the Marina, so I think it's just better if we see if we can allow the, the raising of the funds for the patio rather than putting more taxpayer money into it right now. So, I think that would be a better thing for the community to understand, especially when they talk about their streets crumbling and everything else. So, I'd rather see money go that way, if we can raise money, and we might not be able to. We, I, I go along with your vision of revisiting it in a couple of months.
Do you have something to say, Mr. Zaring?
Good evening. Glenn Zaring, I'm a member of the Harbor Commission, and we've obviously been struggling with this issue for some time, and as a marketing advertising person, I also look at the timeframes involved here. And right now, the Harbor Commission is devoted to trying to improve the profitability of the facility, and we do that by enhancing what we have, and we are, we already had last year a wonderful advertising campaign which increased the number of people coming in. So, we have a market presence, and my concern is if we wait for another year, you know, if we try for six, seven months to get the funds, that's going to put us beyond the point that we could build it for this year. So, just based upon that, I would strongly, and this is just personal, this isn't for the whole Commission, I would appreciate what Mayor Protim was saying here. If we're going, we are poised to move forward, and waiting another year, I think, would hurt our overall process we're trying to accomplish. So, if there's a way to do things more quickly, get ready to go so that DPW can do the thing here soon in time for the boating season, I think that is going to answer the concerns that we have with the expenditure of, as Mayor Protim said, not a lot of money. So, I'd just like to support what he is asking for. Thank you.
Any other questions or discussion? The motion that we have before us is, at this time, council could take action to authorize the Manistee Harbor Commission to solicit sponsorships to fund the paving of the Marina patio area. City Clerk, would you please take a roll?
Councilmember Beaton?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodspeed?
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Pontiac?
Yes.
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Zalinski?
No.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Cooper?
Thank you.
Item C, consideration of a proposal from Top Line Electric to build and install a new control panel for the Cherry Street Lift Station. The electric control panel at Cherry Street Lift Station is scheduled for... The electric control panel at Cherry Street Lift Station is scheduled for replacement this year. Top Line Electric is our vendor of record and has submitted a proposal to complete the work for $39,510. At this time, council could take action to approve the proposal submitted by Top Line Electric in the amount of $39,510 to build and install a new control panel for Cherry Street Lift Station and authorize signatures to execute the document.
I'll make the motion.
One second.
I have a motion by Mayor Protem Zalinski, second by Councilmember Goodspeed. Is there any discussion?
Bids, did we have any other bids, or we put it out for bid, or do we have to put it out for bid?
Because the work is performed by our vendor of record, we already have that negotiated contract with them, and so we just, during the budgeting process last year, we sought out budget estimates from Top Line and then followed back up several months ago to ask them for an actual quote, so it was not a bid process, it just went through the vendor of record.
Anytime we have a vendor of record, we also retain the option to bid significant projects like this. Them offering the original estimate and then sending in a bid right in the same neighborhood, what assurance do we have that we've got the best value for this project?
Well, I think you have that every time we've got a vendor of record. We interview and select firms that we can trust and that we feel are qualified. This is pretty routine. The one thing that, and we do retain the right to solicit other prices if we need to on larger projects. The thing that's unique about this control panel is that it's been designed and built consistent with all the other ones that are in our system, and Top Line has done those as well. And as an example, when Filer Township builds their pump station this summer, we requested that they follow the exact same guidelines, and that went out for competitive bid, Top Line was the little bid on that as well. So they're pretty versed on what these prices are.
And how does this bid compare to the other ones that we've done recently?
It's up just slightly. I think we, I think it was probably four years ago that we bid, that we built one almost identical. It was about $38,000, so they stayed very, very consistent with the numbers. And Top Line actually, three years ago, became UL certified so that the panels can be built in-house and by them, and they're certified to be able to do that so that they didn't have to solicit from outside.
Some of our pump stations have generators, right?
Correct.
This one does not?
This one does not.
And if I remember correctly, we have a portable generator?
We have two. So what the strategy has been on the generators, we feel that the state of Michigan is gonna eventually require that there be a generator for every pump station that we have through the capital improvement process, our capital improvement program. We have identified the top mainline pump stations that we feel are critical and plan to put generators on all of those. Most of those are complete now. And then stations like this that serve a smaller area are not quite as critical, they don't cycle as often. So then we use, in the event of a large power outage, we've got a number of these small ones that we're able to take the portable generators around, plug them in, pump the station down, unplug it, move to the next one, and just kind of circulate those.
Will this station operate on its own temporarily until a generator gets, I was trying to figure out how it, you talked about, it just signals you that it's not working?
Yeah, so...
Battery operated some way, or is it?
Well, the, there's two different, there's two different backup alarms, or two different alarm systems that are on each of these pump stations. So this has a, it's tied to the SCADA, the new panel would be tied to our SCADA system. So that functions on our radio network, and that signals out whenever there's some sort of a failure or problem with the station itself, sends us alarms. The backup is also a cellular, basically a cellular dialer, it's like having a little cellphone, and so that operates on a battery. So if we lose power and the SCADA system doesn't work, then that cellular modem will call out to us, it actually texts us.
Yeah, I just was trying to figure out how much time you had from the time you were signaled to get somebody out there, and it seemed like you had some way of dealing with that, I just couldn't figure it out by reading the...
Right, yeah, the Tennessee standards and the DEQ regulations require that you have two modes of alarm systems on them. So, you know, there's redundancy in a lot of these stations.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
You know, I'd just like to note, two years ago, we switched over, all of those stations used to have what they call POTS lines, plain old telephone service, and Rick Moore and Ed Bradford went through an analysis of what those phone lines were costing us. And so we were able to switch over to those cellular modems on all of our stations, and I think that had less than a two-year payback, correct? So we've already paid for the installation of all those and are continuing to save in the future.
On my tour through the water department, it was just amazing, the technology that's there and how you can tell what pump is working and how much is pumping. Yeah, it's all there.
Yep. Thank you.
City Clerk, would you please take a role?
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton?
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Pontiac?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodspeed?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. Item D, consideration of ordinance amendment Z-18-03 Medical Marijuana Facilities. After City Council adopted ordinance 866 Medical Marijuana Facilities, a zoning amendment was needed to determine what zone districts where a marijuana grower, marijuana processor, marijuana secure transporter, and marijuana safety compliance facilities would be permitted as a special land use and establish special use standards. On February 1, 2018, the Planning Commission held a public hearing and made recommendation to City Council to approve the amendment. As an ordinance, two separate readings are required. If this ordinance is introduced at this time, it would be adopted, it could be adopted at the next regular meeting. At this time, council could take action to introduce zoning ordinance amendment Z-18-03 Medical Marijuana Facilities.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Goodspeed, I mean Beaton, and second by Councilmember Cooper.
It was Roger.
I even wrote them down, you know, I'm good here. Is there any discussion? I would like to personally thank Denise Blakesley, the Planning and Zoning Director and the Planning and Zoning Commission for a job well done. It was very well outlined, I attended the public hearing, short meeting, but everything was laid out well, and I think everybody was pretty much impressed with that.
I was also impressed with the meeting prior to that where you worked out a few of the kinks and spent a lot of time in trying to make sure all the bases were covered, so to speak, so much appreciated.
Any comments, questions? City Clerk, would you please take a role?
Councilmember Beaton?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodspeed?
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Zalinski?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilmember Pontiac?
Yes.
Thank you. Item E. We have received a letter, which I will read to you now, asking for council support for selection of an essential air service carrier. As the elected officials of the City of Manistee, Manistee City Council supports the decision of the Manistee Blacker Airport Authority to continue participation in the alternate air service program. We understand the airport authority spent considerable effort reviewing all proposals, including presentations from all bidders, and believe their recommendation to be in the best interest of our community. Public charters has been a great asset to Manistee County and the surrounding area by providing an affordable, safe, and reliable means of air transportation for people traveling between Manistee and the Chicago area for both business and pleasure. These flights allow for our business community to grow and flourish and become even more successful. We also recognize that these flights are of great convenience to our residents who are able to travel from Manistee to Chicago and connect to other destinations without having to drive great distances to reach an airport, especially when travel can be difficult in the winter season. Manistee's business community is diverse. It includes manufacturing, healthcare, and tourism as leading industries. These industries depend on reliable, safe, and affordable air transportation. The growth of the Manistee Blacker Airport has seen with public charters is evidence that the Manistee business community requires viable air transportation to support its continued economic development. We are confident that the decision of the Manistee Blacker Airport Authority to continue air service to Chicago under the alternate essential air service program with service by Public charters Incorporated doing business as North Country Sky best meets the needs of city residents and businesses. Having seen steady growth in airport use by our residents during the contract for air service, we believe continued participation in the alternate essential air service program provides the best option for continued growth. I urge you to renew the alternate essential air service contract put forth by the Manistee Blacker Airport.
I'll make that motion.
One second.
I have a motion by Mayor Protem Zalinski and a second by Councilmember Pontiac. Is there any discussion? Do please take a role.
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Zalinski?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodspeed?
Yes.
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 Thank you. Notices, Communications, and Announcements. Item A, a report from Republic Services. A regular part of each council meeting is a report from a cooperating agency, organization, or department.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Annual report, just kind of chunk through some things, we've been talking about a lot of these over the last couple of months. Mr. Bradford did a wonderful recap last month on the whole program, so we'll be real quick and sweet tonight for you guys, help you get out of here. Municipal contracts still in place till 2020, so we got a couple more years of that left. Still doing the collection, pretty much same as we have in the past, nothing's really changed in that. We did pass on the curbside discussion this past year, so that's another thing in the books. As we look at the commingling in the contract term last year, pretty flat in terms of tonnage, and we talked to this, the year prior was the diminishing ton. Boxes becoming more lightweight as the materials become less dense. So even though the weight looks pretty comparative, there was only a ton of difference in the two weights from 15 to 16 and 16 to 17, we went up considerably in the number of boxes that were pulled, so we went from 64 boxes the previous year to 100 boxes this turn contract year. And that really comes back to that diminishing ton. So that water bottle example we used last year, you know, in 2000, there was 48,000 plastic water bottles in a ton. In 2015, there was 92,000 water bottles in that same ton. So twice the amount of volume for the equal comparative weight, and that's the difference in those container exchanges. So I just wanted to kind of, you know, pushpoint on that again this year, let you guys know that that's a trend that we continue to see. Less and less fiber, more and more light-weighted plastics, taking up more material, requiring more turns. Really, the only way to get away from that is to do a compactor-style unit at the drop site, which some other communities have done, but those come with significant capital investments, about $20,000, and a requirement for power on-site. So that's something that we can explore with you if you ever choose to go that route, but it's not something that you wanna jump real fast into. As it relates to tons, really, monthly collection of tons, pretty equivalent, you know, as you look over the last couple of years. Last year was 206 again, and that slide looks like it didn't update. On that one, on mine, it did, it actually rounded at 206 again this past year. So two years in a row, you're at 206 tons a month was the average, so pretty flat. I mean, you see that back in 14, little spikes here and there, but that 205, 206 number kind of reappears across the board as you look at that. So nothing out of the norm there. Average cost for the program, up a couple thousand dollars over the year prior, 27 last year as the average monthly cost versus 24 the year prior. But that's staying in trend really with what the economy's doing, so nothing out of whack. And you do have a PI increase year over year in that contract, so you will see a little lift naturally because of that adjustment. A lot of people have been talking about this topic. Last week, Tuesday, the governor proposed a tax, basically a landfill tipping fee throughout the state. It made most of the news outlets, I wanted you guys to be aware of it, so as you hear that, you can feel educated on it. So right now, the DEQ charges any landfill operator 36 cents per ton of material that comes into the landfill. What the governor's proposing is $4.75 a ton, so a really hefty lift. Equates to about $79 million in new revenue, and that revenue will be switched out in a couple places, and I'll talk to you about it in a minute. But it really breaks out between brownfield, solid waste management, recycling, water quality, and state park infrastructure. So even though the money is coming out of the solid waste arena, that money's really getting distributed kind of far and wide. It's not tied at all to solid waste resources. If you look at the City of Manistee program, last year you did 2,474 tons of material and solid waste. That difference would really equate out to about $11,000 in budget change for you if this were to pass. Again, this is a proposal today, it's very recent, there are no legs behind it, it's not a bill yet, it's just a proposal, but it is getting a ton of press, so I wanted you guys to be aware of it, so it didn't cause questions for you on the backside. So in the governor's proposal, he referenced the average homeowner would spend about $4.25 is what this would cost them if it were to make it through, the city's net would be about $3.81 per home based on your tonnage. These two documents kind of show where that's going, and it kind of talks about where, you know, we compare to the rest of the world. So the one on the right with the picture of the state kind of shows you a dotted line there. Those really kind of chunk up, and I'll give you, Thad can send out these slides to you guys if you want to see that in more detail. But that 475 would put us under the average, but really above most of our neighboring communities. So it is a big jump for us, and the document on the right that breaks out the categories show that that 79 million's gonna go 45 million to brownfield, 9 million to DEQ solid waste management. And of that, nine, a chunk of that's gonna come back to county for solid waste planning amendments which are being proposed, which haven't been done in a while. 15 will come back into forms of grants for recycling activities such as building transfer stations for recycling and could even fund a compactor unit like we just talked about a minute ago as an example. Water quality monitoring takes 5 million of it, and state park infrastructure takes five. So solid waste out of that 79 million's gonna get 24, and the rest of it kind of goes somewhere else. But I wanted you guys to be aware of it in case that, you know, hit your radar and you had any questions about it. Last year, we did a spring event, did the tire collection, picked up over 900 tires, it was a good event. This year, we're looking at doing a paint drive with e-paint out of Battle Creek who'll recycle that material. Once they recycle it, they repackage the stuff that's reusable and typically sell that through the Habitat for Humanity stores. That's something that's funded through Republic Services in an amendment that you guys did two years ago, replacing the collection that we used to do at the DPW garage. So that's something that doesn't have a budget cost to it. So that's something that doesn't have a budget cost to it. It's something that we take care of for you, or we apply for grants and get it done that way. But wanted you guys to kind of bookmark that date, the nineteenth. We did confirm that today. That's when we'll be doing that paint drive at the Armory again, and seemed to be a great location for us last year, and we're looking forward to being there again this year. Kind of rounding it up, we just completed a two-phase audit of the entire city routes, where we went through every line of data in the system and helped with the implementation of getting that BSNA software that you guys just installed as accurate as it was possible for the solid waste. And that allows those audit values will allow us to do future reinforcement and education to the residents to keep them within the standards that they've chosen. So that's complete and moving forward well. I just wanted you guys to know about that. And then, short and sweet as promised, I'll get out of your hair unless you guys got any questions for me.
Any questions?
Sick of seeing you already, huh? It's been two months. Get out of here, man.
Well, I went to the recycling center on Monday, and every bin was full. The one, the two at the end furthest away from the gate, well, they had snow on the top of the lids, making it almost nearly impossible for an out-of-shade five-foot, one-and-a-half person to lift. So I was just kind of happy when I got to the last bin that there was like a three-by-three opening in the back end of it that I'd never noticed on them before, so I was able to get my recyclables in there. But I thought it was a really good sign that with all the snow that we had over the weekend, the bins were full. I mean, people are obviously still using the recycling center, even in bad weather, so maybe feel kind of good about that, so.
Are they emptied routinely, or are they just emptied?
Nope, they're on a schedule. They come around and pick those up on a schedule.
Tuesday's the first one of the week.
When you talk about the increase in frequency of dumping, are you talking about the multipurpose bin, or are you talking about the paper bins, fiber?
The hundred containers is speaking specifically to the multi, the roll-off style container that's doing all of the co-mingled materials.
And that's getting dumped about twice a week. You know, it's interesting in the governor's proposal on a fee for tonnage, there's another proposal, I believe, on water imposing a five-dollar fee to start replacing all the lead lines that go to residences. It'd be interesting to see where both of those go in the House and Senate.
Year of tax proposals. So, yeah, you know, and this is an interesting year as we look at both the House and the Senate. It's, you know, it is a Republican-held House and Senate for the most part, and these type of measures sometimes don't do well in that type of political climate, along with being a lame duck governor at this point. You know, he's, you know, held us to the end, which is part of his legacy, and so that might help it get through, it might help it not get through it, you know. At the end of the day, at this point, it's just a proposal. It's, I couldn't wager money on it either way and feel comfortable, and I don't think the casino would give me odds.
Just so.
Yeah, so we talked during the curbside recycling programs about enforcement, and so at the completion of the audit, you know, the question comes down to Republic has traditionally been probably more lenient than we have been restrictive to the terms of the contract, and there was some comment from council about how we'd like to rein that in a little bit. I'd really like you guys to put some thought to that and maybe talk with Mr. Taylor and tell us where exactly, you know, for lack of a better word, how strict you want us to be with that enforcement. We're content following the wheels of the contract, and we do make exceptions for the holiday weeks, so Fourth of July and Christmas time, we always take lots of extras. But we will be, you know, reining in some of that and really monitoring the mini-level services and the tote-level services. And people who, you know, take a tote from a person that moves out next door and kind of hides it behind their house until no one pays attention, puts it out, we'll make sure that we catch those better. And for people that are on the mini-level of service and, you know, putting out more bags than their level of service, we're going to start dialing that back. So that will generate some additional time downstairs as those first initiatives go through, but once those are done, you know, we'll get the system back in line. And, you know, really, the audit helped bring the counts where they need to be right now in terms of, you know, the city making sure everyone's where they are, identifying those people and addressing them and getting them right. So now it's just a matter of keeping that data. And Mr. Bradford and Kelly and I sat down last week and, you know, had a great plan put together on how to get the computer system squared away continuously, and then it's just about a matter of enforcement, so.
Can you share any of that data with us? What did you find?
You know, we, out of it, out of the carts specifically, we found about two-hundred lines of data that needed either clarification or modification. Out of that two-hundred lines, there was probably seventy-five to a hundred carts that were added to the system that were previously either a mini or a regular. On the mini-level of service, that audit was really to determine how many people were, you know, at the regular level versus the mini-level. And out of that, there was about another two-hundred in that range, which was about half and half, half carts, half regular people that were listed at the mini-level of service but utilizing a cart that they had picked up over the years and either discontinued but still had held on to or came with the house when they procured it and just started using it. And so that was adjusted within the system. So if you look at the total cart number, historically in the system, there was a thousand forty-three carts before we started this. At the end of it, we actually went backwards in carts. We went down. The city has less carts at this point, and we increased the other level of services just because we determined that some people had transitioned carts away and some people just didn't have it the right way. In the old computing system, what really happened is at one point in life, the city issued a number, and then we tracked pluses and minuses to that number over the years. And so every year, the pluses and minuses went in the system, but the old system didn't have a good way to export the data well, and it took us a while to get the new data to the right way as well. I mean, the first report was less than desirable, and we found a glitch in it that didn't show the right number, so we got that tweaked out. But, you know, so it's, the total end count, I could send around an email to Thad that he can share with you guys. I didn't bring that with me tonight, but there is a new count that we can give you. Kelly's doing a last update on the report this week, and we'll be able to generate that final number. That will go into the billing system from there.
Another question? Thank you very much.
You're very welcome. You folks have a great evening.
Brings us to item D, discussion on budget priorities. The manager, Thad Toder, has requested a discussion with council to get feedback on their budget priorities for the upcoming budget process.
Yes, we're beginning, staff's beginning to assemble their various budgets, anticipation of presentation to council, and certainly would be helpful as we're preparing this to hear from council in regards to what your priorities are, so we can look at putting those into our budget document.
I suspect with our budget amendments that we have approved tonight, as opposed to a balanced budget, we're now going to have a deficit budget and pull from the fund balance to fund that.
No, I think what I heard Mr. Bradford say is that we had a higher-than-anticipated personal property tax reimbursements from the state, and we think that would cover, that will cover these additional budget amendments. In fact, he's projecting maybe about a fifty thousand dollar surplus. So we're in pretty good shape right now in terms of running a balanced budget.
I think, going forward, one of my objections would be to have a balanced budget and not pull from the fund balance going forward. I think it is difficult to pinpoint where we can rein spending in to be able to do things. I'm still committed, as I was when I joined city council, to finding resources to put more money in the streets. I know we've done better, but I think like Mayor Protem Zalinski said, you know, it seems that when we want to do something, we can find the money to do that. And I think we really need to be committed to adding whatever resources we can to street maintenance and accelerating the progress that we've made on those.
It's going to be very difficult with the revenue stream that we have right now to do that, and going back to the ad hoc street committee, one of the things that they had recommended is as we'd made progress on improvements to our streets, then they were recommending, as an example, asking the community for a headly rollback so we could have more money to address streets. So I would ask council to consider something along those lines if you're wanting to ramp up the revenues that you can put into streets. At least have the community weigh in and see how they feel about that.
For the sake of discussion, I kind of made myself a Christmas list on priorities. Balanced budget, not using the contingency fund, freeze hiring temporarily till we get things straightened out, see where we're at, and then take a ten percent across-the-board cut and use that money for streets. It's a point, a place to start. It's just a Christmas list.
So a ten percent, when you mean across the board, just?
Departments take a ten percent cut.
All operations take a ten percent cut?
Use that money toward streets. Now, is that realistic? I don't know, but that would be my wish list.
Okay.
I think that's a really nice Christmas list. The only thing that I would, I'm really passionate about is, you know, the sale of city property, and I just want the proceeds from the sales to go toward fixing our local I do want a balanced budget, but I'm pretty comfortable that we generally have one, although we have to make some adjustments in the year in amendments. We had a balanced budget last year, and we've had to make some amendments, but they seem like they're manageable based on the financial presentation that Ed Bradford gave on it. So I think that's always going to be something that I would want too. I just really think that we need to look at what is essential versus what is nonessential in our appropriations. And that's all I have for you right now.
Just kind of reemphasized, trying to come up with money for streets, I was kind of shocked into reality when Mr. McCullough talked about our streets, something I already knew, I guess, in the back of my mind, but some of our streets, the way we're going right now, will never get fixed. We keep the good streets, try to keep them good, and some of these streets that have not been addressed in years and years and years will never get addressed unless we change something going forward. Something has to change, or we'll never get there, in my opinion. I could be wrong, but I see our money staying flat, the tax base is staying flat, we're not gaining a lot, and costs keep going up, so.
That's why I just reminded council what the street ad hoc committee had recommended, that, you know, put more money into it, show progress, and if we need more, go back to the community and ask if they would do something like a headly rollback. Back to, what I'm hearing is consensus is, from the council members that have spoke, is that interested in a balanced budget without use of fund balance, you would like more money for streets. That's, other than that, I'm just hearing from, you know, just one person. Now, if we, Mr. Protem, Mayor Protem, if we do a ten percent cut across the entire budget, that's people. So we'd have to look at laying off people.
Well, as I said, I said it's a starting point. It's something that I use ten percent because it was just the top of my head. That doesn't mean it'll end up being ten percent, but it's a place to start. How do we, I'm asking you, how do we make the changes? How do we start coming up with the money to do some of the things we have to do with everything, with the cost increasing? Eventually, something, we've got to stop doing things.
Well, we've got a choice of increasing revenues, and I think with some of the developments that we're seeing in relation to medical marijuana initiatives and the developments around that and the job creation, you know, there's a revenue stream. Selling of city property, getting that back on the tax rolls, there's an increased revenue stream. And I keep, sound like a broken record, but if we want to put more money into the streets, let's put it back to the voters and see how much they're willing to back that. So those are some options. The staff continues to look at any opportunities for efficiencies and savings throughout the budget, so, you know, those are some options.
We pay the highest millage of any community in the county of Manistee right now. We have nothing council has on the table to increase millage without a vote to the public. I just find putting a millage for streets, and I would have to have a safeguard that says, you know, whatever we're putting in to streets right now doesn't fall off the board because we have a millage, and people think that's what we have for streets now. And that seems to be the tendency. The budget has talked for years about increased cost and limited revenue and such, and it continues to address. I believe last year it says that headcount reductions cannot be dismissed. That's kind of a repeat statement. Maybe they just failed to take it out of the budgets from years past, but it continues following along the same line. Two of the biggest increases we had in this year's budget is our Michigan Employee Retirement System increase and our healthcare cost increase. Both of them were in excess of a hundred thousand dollars. Those are projected to increase even more in the future. Those, in my opinion, are going to force exactly what we don't want. Headcount reductions, we sure can't afford to add any more people with those costs as they are. It seems to me it will be inevitable unless we quickly come up with a revenue stream. And certainly, the medical marijuana, if that develops at the industrial park, or if it happens at the ironworks facility, will add significant city revenue in tax flow. But, you know, the thirty-two or thirty-four thousand dollars of properties that are on the tax rolls now, you're talking seventeen thousand dollars of taxable value. That's not going to put much in the general fund. The properties, if the one presentation was right and they're going to put twelve million dollars' worth of buildings up on those industrial lots, then yes, by my calculations, we're talking about a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars of tax revenue just to the city, you know, not counting the county and some others. That would be a significant boost, but it's going to take some real increases in tax revenue to even start to keep up with the expense growth that we've gotten.
Agreed.
As I look over the budget, and I try, and I'm not an accountant, and it's a struggle for me to try to figure things out sometimes, but as I look it over, I'm trying to determine what is the true cost of some of the services that we, that we as a city supply to our citizens? What is that really true cost? We seem to know about their salaries, but we don't know all the other things that go into that and what the real true cost is. And I'm going to be asking that a lot. What is the real true cost of this service? And I think that our citizens have a right to know what the true cost is, and they can decide and tell me what they're willing to support and not support, whether it be streets and other millage, whatever. But I want to start dealing with what the true cost of that service is.
Well, the true cost is reflected in
Well, the true cost is reflected in our budget. I mean, we, you have the police, as an example, the police department budget, you have the water department budget, you have the city managers' department budget, all of those are broken out, and if somebody asks, what does it cost to operate our DPW? You can look at that bottom-line number in the DPW budget. So I think, I think the, the costs are there, unless I'm missing something you're looking for.
I think I look sometimes, and it's, what, what, what does, you, you go back to former budgets, and, and seven, eight years ago, it, it listed department heads and, and, and staff cost in the budget. Those, those have been dropped out. There's been some new things added in the more recent budgets that are in there, with your tenure, the three-year forecast that's on there also, but it's, it's kind of been a moving target. The, I go back and look at budgets, and, for example, the, when, when we add a person, it talks about cost. We added a deputy building inspector, and he wasn't promoted to building inspector, we did away with the position when that was done, but there was a, a finance part-time clerk that went away, and, and there was a caretaker at the Ramsdale that went away, and that individual was also the contractor of record for, for building maintenance at the time, and, and they said his, the only increased cost was gonna be $5,000 over all those other elements taking place at the same time. As, as we move forward, we have the building maintenance position, but now, we again, through our subsidy, we have a, a paid part-time caretaker at the Ramsdale again. And I think, you know, sometimes positions come and go. We turned around and added the part-time clerk, not, not a part-time, but a full-time clerk to the finance department two years later. I mean, we, we take away at one hand, and, and then we come back, and we put again at another hand, and it's just like when we went to a public safety director and did away with the fire chief. We saved $100,000, and then the very next year, we went to a deputy fire chief and, and consumed all that savings plus some. It, it hasn't planned out as well as, as projected.
I guess I'm able to look at the budget and see what the bottom line is, and what we budget for that amount. What I'm trying to get at is how that money's broken out, and where does it go, and is there any place in my mind that I think we could save some money? That's what I'm trying to, to get at. And it's, it's hard, it's hard to go through that, things change all the time, it's just really, really difficult. But that's, I'm gonna keep asking, what, what is the real cost, and go from there.
So what, what I'm hearing as a consensus are two things, a balanced budget without use of fund balance, and more money for streets. That's, seems to be the consensus.
I would agree with that.
So that's where we'll drive it?
I, I just have a thought. I mean, I think property taxes probably just run on average $6 million. It's, and I applaud Roger for being brave enough to suggest a 10% cut, but having, looking at these budgets for the last few years, I'm, I'm really reluctant to think that we're gonna find $600,000 somewhere, you know, to, to take out of it and, and redirect it towards streets, so I, I think that's gonna be a, probably impossible. There are some other areas that we will be needing to take a hard look at. I don't know whether, I, I think it should come up this year, that we talk about the DDA. I know that's gonna be a tender subject, but it's something that we, we do need to And, and, you know, that's just something else that we can put on there as something that we should, we, we're gonna have to examine that, and see where we wanna go with that.
Thank you for your patience.
Concerns and comments? Citizen comments? So, any citizens that wish to comment on any opportunity for citizens to comment on municipal services, activities, or area of city involvement? Citizens in attendance shall be recognized by the mayor for comment, limited to five minutes. Letters submitted to council will not be publicly written. Any members that wish to address City Council?
Mayor Smith, I have something.
I get to you.
Okay.
No, go ahead.
I thought it was my.
Where'd he go?
Oh, huh. Maybe we might wanna wait a minute.
Okay. Okay. Officials and staff, city manager.
Nothing at this time.
City attorney.
Nothing, Your Honor.
City clerk. Public safety director.
Just wanted to take a moment. Firefighter Chris Jeffries had a honest discussion with me about his future, and he's decided to put in his notice to leave the, the City of Manistee. In the short tenure that I've known him, he's contributed a ton to the organization, he's gonna be very sorely missed. He was well-respected within the medical community. It's gonna be hard to fill his shoes, and we're gonna be trying to look to fill that here, hopefully soon, but I just wanted to be able to thank him on the record for his commitment to the City of Manistee for the last, I think, four to five years that he's been here, so, thank you.
He did all the CPR classes for daycare, too, and all the other, so, we're gonna have a problem finding someone now.
Chief financial officer. Public works director. Yeah, come up here to the podium.
Jeff, could you step up to the podium for a minute?
Missing an accent, Jeff.
Let me get my list. No, I'm just kidding. The city council recognizes your service and your, your anniversary of working with the city for five years, and we just wanna give you a thank you note.
Thank you.
For taking all those tough questions, because you do take a lot of them.
Thank you, Jeff. My name is Honig Director. City engineer.
Oh, Your Honor.
We should've found something to pick on you today. City council members.
I don't think there's a city within 50 miles of here that woke up on a Sunday morning and drove down through town, and the snow was all cleared. Great job. It was quite amazing.
I wanna say thank you to the Manistee City Fire Department and Manistee City Police Department. On Saturday, my dad called me and said, Mom's unacting right. I went over there, and I thought she was having a stroke, called 911. The guys were there. Captain Petty and firefighter LaPointe showed up, and then Officer Haner from the City Police showed up. They did a phenomenal job, they took care of Mom, and I really appreciate it. I really do. Thank you.
So, on a personal note, I just want to thank everybody for your kindness and your thoughts in my recovery. I had a lot of medical issues in the last month, and I'm just very proud of this community. I had a lot of people come and show their support for my family and myself. I had people babysitting my kids, fixing meals, even Linda brought me a meal, and Roger and Jim there visited me like every other day in the hospital, making sure I had some reading material for the city. So we, we definitely live in a very good community and very helpful community, so I'm very proud of this community. So thank you, everyone.
You know, Sunday morning, Jeff, I had to dodge the snow removal to get to the House of Flavors for coffee. It was a nice, clean road, but they were still scooping it off the street. It was cleared by the time I got down to surroundings for the afternoon, so it, it was a good job, and I don't think many communities woke up and, and saw that removed. It is truly appreciated.
With all due respect, they had to get done before the Super Bowl started.
Okay.
Good motivation there, huh?
Okay. Thanks to everyone that showed up, I know some of the people have already left, but we always appreciate citizens and members of commissions that come in to, to join us and be part of the session. That's very much appreciated. At this time, I take item D, consideration of a closed session, union contract negotiations. City manager Thad Taylor has requested a closed session this evening, as permitted by the Michigan Open Meeting Act, Section 8(c), to discuss contract negotiations with the International Association of Firefighters. I have a motion.
I'll second it.
I have a motion by Mayor Protem Zalinski, and a second by Councilmember Goodspeed. Any discussion? Do you please take vote?
Councilmember Hoover.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Zalinski.
Yes.
Councilmember Goodspeed.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Pania.
Yes.
Thank you. Anyone that needed to take a quick break before we go in session, please feel free.